This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, November 20th, 2024. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by E-Media on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage easthamptonmedia.org. Councilors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the order extended until March 2025, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remotely to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. The meeting is now called to order. Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kuzinski?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley?
Here.
Cameron Smith?
Here.
JT Terrell?
Here.
Owen Derrick?
Present.
Okay, and we have a moment of silence. And we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have any minutes to approve. Oh, do we?
Yeah, we do. Sorry.
That doesn't...
It's not on there.
Oh, okay.
You do.
All right, so November 6th. So we have minutes from November 6th to approve. I would entertain a motion.
So...
Second.
And we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, motion passes. Okay, public comment. So this is public speak time. This is where members of the public can comment on things that are not on our public hearing. And we will give you up to three minutes to address the council. Just step to the podium, say your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Nathan Markey. I live at 37 Holyoke Street. I am the Chair of the East Hampton Democrats. I'm also on the Board of Directors for E-Media, though I am not here in that capacity. I know that the mayor is receiving a lot of flak over the ordinance. I know that potentially, meeting downstairs might be canceled, so I'm just going to say my comments up here instead. I believe the mayor is right. It violates U.S. flag codes in at least two ways. That being, a light must... It must be illuminated at night, or else it needs to be brought in and out every single day at sunrise and sunset. Also, it's not supposed to be out in the snow, rain, et cetera, unless it's a certain particular type of flag. I've known Mayor LaChapelle for many, many years. I see a lot of work she does behind the scenes, and she cares very, very deeply for this town and for all of their constituents, regardless of political affiliation. The more I've gotten to know her, the more I like her, and I know she's only looking out for the best interests of the town, or the city, rather, and its constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Yep, just say your name and address for the record.
Carl Prawl, 15 Torrey, Underline Farm. I'm here just to inquire... Well, first, with some stats regarding housing in East Hampton. Forty-six percent of households in East Hampton are low-income. Of those, one in eight households in East Hampton are spending fifty percent or more of their income on housing. I think, according to census.gov, more than thirty percent of... Sorry, let me start that over again. In our area, we have forty-one percent of renters who are cost burn, which means they're spending thirty percent or more of their income on housing. In East Hampton, the average rental is seventeen hundred and nine dollars. If you do the math on a minimum wage fifteen-dollar-an-hour job, it is simply unaffordable. There are no rents in East Hampton below seven hundred dollars. There is nothing. In the first quarter of 2024, forty percent of house... Single-family housing in Massachusetts was purchased by corporations. In East Hampton, we are below the state average on owner occupancy in our housing. We're like fifteen percent below the state average, which means more corporations, more LLCs are buying up housing, making it more and more unaffordable. As a small business owner, I find it impossible to find people who can stay in the area, keep a job, set down roots. At my day job, to make it all possible, I work with guys who have, you know, have good blue-collar jobs, who cannot afford a down payment on a home in the area and are simply looking to leave. And so my question for the council is, what is being done to address this? When Kestrel Land Trust was looking to build affordable housing, this council stated that we were in a housing crisis. Maura Healy has stated that we are in a housing crisis. And yet, we look around and landlords are regularly raising rent year in, year out. And so, again, my question, what is being done to address this? Thank you.
Anybody else for public speak? And just for clarification, we're not ignoring you, but we don't respond to public speak because of open meeting laws, so just want to make that clear. Okay. Nobody else? Anybody online for public speak? Okay. Seeing none. I think we don't have any items for media attention, communications from elected official boards and commissions. I think Counselor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just want to, first, want to remind folks in the community that we have the Municipal Leadership Academy, that President Gomez, myself, and Counselor Smith are facilitating and working with department heads in the city. It's an opportunity for residents to learn about the ins and outs of the function of government here in East Hampton. It's a great educational opportunity, and it's a great way to meet directors of departments, get to know the... What the departments do, and also, if there's issues or concerns that you have in the future, you know who to go to, right? So it's a great relationship-building opportunity. And the second thing I want to address, it was a bit of a... It was a huge oversight last week. I just want to acknowledge our city clerk, Barbara Lombard, who did yet again an amazing job of running our city election, and had a great turnout of individuals. You know, you put a lot of time, energy, and have a huge commitment to the city, and so just want to extend our gratitude and our appreciation for all the work that you do for the city and for the residents in ensuring our right to vote. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Counselor Denham. Counselors, there.
Thank you, Mr. President, or Mr. Vice President, Acting President, thank you. Just want to announce that the high school play, Little Women, is this week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I think it's six o'clock tomorrow, 7:00 PM Friday and Saturday, and I believe there's a two o'clock matinee on Sunday. I know that the group, the Drama Club, has worked very hard to put this on. Tickets can be purchased in advance, online, or at the door, and I think it'll be really entertaining. It's always great to go out and support our high school. And then I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the loss of life that occurred in our city this past week with the drowning in the pond, to certainly thank the people on scene and all the first responders who made great efforts to save this individual's life, but also just to acknowledge and send support and love to the friends, neighbors, and family of this individual. So just sending that out there to the universe and thinking about them and everyone else, and may their memory be a blessing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselors there. We don't have any correspondence, and there's no president or vice president communications. Do not see the mayor. So I think that we can, since we have about six minutes, we can get ourselves into committee reports. Finance, Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, finance met last week. We discussed the item that we will be discussing in approximately six minutes, and so you'll hear all about that at that point. Other than that, just a reminder that next week... Or, sorry, not next week. In two weeks, we are going to be having a public hearing about the required review of salaries for elected officials and appointed committees. Specifically, the council or the Finance Committee made a recommendation to set a schedule of three thousand dollar a year raises for the mayor, but leave all other salaries and stipends unchanged. So that's going to be in two weeks, in these chambers at 6:15. And I don't think we have any new business, so we will not be meeting next week, so I think that concludes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Peak.
I had sent an email earlier today requesting next week for minutes approval for finance next week, either Tuesday or Wednesday.
I'm so sorry. I got... I've had a horrible IT problem, and I was locked out of my email today.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, let's do it. All right, so we'll be meeting at 5:30 on Wednesday.
Is Wednesday okay, being the day before Thanksgiving?
I'll be around.
Okay.
If you are, yeah.
5:30?
Yeah, 5:30.
You can even do Thursday if you want.
I'll be asleep. But, yeah, that's... Yeah, let's just do that. We'll do minutes approval.
Okay, thank you.
Great. I'm so sorry for that.
That's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Public safety, Counselors there.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We met last week, predominantly discussing the proposal to reverse the traffic direction on Daly Field Road. This is primarily a park-owned property, but the Park's Director wanted to be able to create a little bit more visibility and transparency by bringing it through the council. He was not able to attend. There were two park commissioners there. I think the general consensus is that we agree on the proposal. It would be a lot safer, and it would facilitate easier traffic flow, as well as line people up better to be able to pay entry fees or bypass entry fees if they have a season pass. The plan will be to have more public comment and hopefully have the director present at our next meeting, which is December 10th at 6:00 PM. And the committee's still discussing it, because I don't think this falls under traffic rules and order, but we'll figure out if it's either just a report out of committee or some form of a more general vote to recommend to the commission to reverse the traffic. I see we have about three minutes left. We also briefly discussed the proposal to create a citywide speed limit of 25 miles per hour, except as others specified. I think, again, there's general consensus that we, in order to limit traffic incidences and create as much pedestrian safety as possible, that that would be wise. I think we just have to figure out the best way to do that language-wise. And then we dove into the review of traffic rules and order. For the most part, most of the changes so far are just broadly changing some kind of outdated gendering within the language, as well as references to boards and committees that no longer either exist or have purview over traffic. So we'll continue to have that discussion. As noted, our next meeting is December 10th at 6:00 PM. I'm assuming in Room 1, probably, likely?
Yeah.
Okay. And just a quick look over, I don't think there's anything we need to extend... Oh, we did also vote to dismiss the Ordinance Review Committee final report without prejudice. There are a couple lingering items that need to be examined in order to be brought back to the council, and the committee felt it was best that those could just be handled individually. I believe one of them still needs attorney review, and another one just needs some word smithing. So actually, at this time, to the council, I would like to, in the form of a motion, propose a removal without prejudice of the Ordinance Review Committee's final report.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion in the second to dismiss Ordinance Review Committee's final report without prejudice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes, and that brings us... Counselor there, are you...
And thus concludes.
Okay, that brings us to 6:15. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are open. Counselor Peak, I will turn it over to you.
Um, sorry, Counselor President, you're trying to... I was just trying to say, I think the meeting, all of your board is downstairs.
The gentleman here is looking.
Yeah.
The meeting downstairs is being canceled by fire cards because there's too many people.
Oh, all right. Okay, so, yes, so... Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Yeah, so the only item we have tonight is the fiscal year 2025 tax classification. The Finance Committee met and discussed this last week on the advice of the Board of Assessors and our principal assessor, Martha Leamy, who's here right now. We voted three to zero to essentially keep our tax classification the same in 2025 as it has been for many, many years. I could go into detail, but I know that Martha has prepared a presentation that will probably do a better job at it, so I'll... If you're okay with it, I'll pass on.
Please, absolutely.
I don't see it. Oh. Mr. Vice President?
Yep.
I'm not sure that that microphone is...
Turned on?
Turned on, because I had a hard time hearing the person speaking before, so I think something has happened. Push?
Push, yes.
Can you hear me now? Not any. No.
Is it a little green light?
There is a green light.
If it is a green light, it should be good.
Yeah.
So hopefully, people at home can hear.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Good evening. I'm Martha Leamy, Principal Assessor, and just want to say that this presentation is located on the Assessor's page on the website for East Hampton. And we are here for the tax classification. Notice of this hearing was posted on the city's website and in the Gazette on November 16th, as required by the DOR. The following information is for illustrative purposes only, and many of the figures used are from fiscal year 25. Before the tax rate can be set, the city council must hold a public hearing each year to consider the tax rate options available to the city under tax classification. This hearing is held only after the Board of Assessors has determined the final values and classified all property reported and reported this information to the Department of Revenue, who will then certify our values, which will set up the parameters for the options the municipality may adopt. And we have received final notification of our values on November 8th. This hearing does not determine the tax rate, and we have not said it as of yet. As I mentioned, the board... The purpose of the hearing is for the Board of Assessors to present information to you so you're able to vote on a factor in which to establish the allocation of the tax levy with either a single tax rate or a split tax rate. You will also determine if you want to adopt a residential exemption or a small commercial exemption, which I will get into at the end. I think it's important to know simply how the tax rate is determined. And again, these figures are used from '24 to show the process of setting the tax rate. City Council and assessors work separately of each other. City Council will vote appropriations and other amounts to be raised on cherry sheets with the overlay minus estimated receipts, which gives you the real and personal property tax levy. And that is the total amount to be raised by taxation. The assessors will develop values based on actual sales in the town, which for fiscal '25 use '22 and '23 sales, valid sales. As mentioned earlier, values are reviewed and approved by the Department of Revenue, which gives us the total valuation of all real and personal property. You take the total raised by taxation, divided by the total valuation, times a thousand, and you get the tax rate, which last year was thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Getting to the split or single rate, you must decide to tax all classes of property at their full and fair cash value of the tax levy. Using a factor of one will result... Sorry, I don't multitask well. On the first line, that would be a factor of one, which keeps the tax rate at a single tax rate for both commercial, industrial, personal property, and residential. If you choose to go... Or if you reduce the share of the tax levy paid by the residential property owners and shift those taxes to commercial, industrial, personal property taxpayers, it will result in a split tax rate, and you can go up to fifty percent over. So the bottom line shows that it lowers the tax levy percentage for residential, raises it for commercial, and with the fifty percent shift, it would lower the average single-family tax bill three hundred and thirty-nine dollars, based on a single-family assessment of three hundred eighty-one thousand one dollars, which is based on our average for fiscal '24. And again, with that same maximum shift of fifty percent, it increases the average commercial-industrial tax bill four thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars on an average commercial-industrial assessment of six hundred and six thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. So that, using that maximum, based on last year's figures, residential would be twelve sixty-seven, and commercial-industrial would be twenty dollars and thirty-four cents. This is just a historical perspective of our tax rate, and if you notice, when the tax... When the levy goes up, the tax rate comes down. So we had a tax rate in 2017 of sixteen dollars and twenty-one cents, and over the years, it has lowered to last year's tax rate of thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents, except for 2020, which I believe was an override for the Mountain View School. Now, one of the options to adopt or not adopt is the residential exemption. You may vote a residential exemption that is for all principal residences, which is... Let me start over. City Council may vote to adopt a residential exemption for all residential properties that is the principal resident of the taxpayer. It is a fixed-dollar amount that is excluded from the valuation of each owner-occupied residence. The exemption percentage is as low as five percent and up to a maximum of thirty-five percent of the average assessed value of all residential properties. It does not change the total taxable value. The effect shifts the tax burden from lower-valued owner-occupied home to owners of rental properties, vacation homes, and higher-valued homes. And it typically is in cities and towns where there is a large population of second homes, rental homes, such as eighteen municipalities, Barnstable, Brookline, Boston, Concord, Cambridge, Chelsea, Everett, Malden, Mashpee, Nantucket, Oak Bluffs, Provincetown, Somerville, Tisbury, Turo, Waltham, Watertown, and Wellfleet. East Hampton taxpayers would not benefit from this exemption due to the majority of residential properties being owner-occupied. We don't have a large population of second homes. And the last to adopt is the small commercial exemption. City Council may vote to adopt a small commercial exemption of no more than ten percent of the assessed value of each eligible commercial property, but only if the following conditions are met. The business has an annual average employment of no more than ten people, as certified by the Department of Employment and Training, and the valuation of the property must be less than one million dollars. If the exemption is adopted, it would shift the tax dollars that the small business would be exempted from paying onto remaining larger businesses. In '24, fiscal year '24, there were only fourteen communities that had adopted the small commercial exemption, and they are all located out east. Again, this exemption does not change the total taxation for commercial properties, and it does not benefit small business owners. It only benefits the owner of the real estate. And the Board of Assessor has recommended for fiscal year 2025 that city council adopt a single tax rate for all classes of property, that you vote to adopt no residential exemption and no small commercial exemption. Thank you. Any questions?
Any counselors have any questions? Okay, seeing none, I guess... And this is where the public gets to ask questions. Does anybody from the public like to make a statement? Okay, seeing none. I would entertain a motion.
Online? How about online?
Oh, I don't think there's anybody online.
That should be off, yeah.
There's no hands up. And there's only, looks like, one, so...
Thank you.
Seeing none.
I think it's just...
Seeing none.
I...
Ready for the motion.
Sure. All right. I move that the city of East Hampton set a factor of one for the fiscal year 2025 tax rate, keeping a single tax rate for all classes of property, and to not grant an open space discount, nor a residential exemption, nor a small commercial exemption, as recommended by the Board of Assessors and Finance Committee.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no? Okay, motion passes. And I... That's all we have for public hearings. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearings.
So move second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed, and that brings us back to committee reports, and I believe we ended with public safety, so that would bring us to appointments. Counselor Riley?
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice President. So currently, we did not meet since our last meeting, but I do have new business items that are going to be coming up at the end of this meeting, so I would like to schedule our next meeting for December 2nd at 6:00 PM. And that's going to be... That's a Monday, and that'll be in Conference Room 2, which is right here behind City Council Chambers, and thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Riley. Ordinance, Counselor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We haven't met since our last meeting. We're still waiting for the review from the city attorney regarding the East Hampton Shreveery ordinance, and we're still evaluating the amendments to Chapter 2, Division 3, Council on Aging. I do anticipate that we will have some additional items for our next agenda in addition to these, but we have not set that date yet, because we are waiting for that information from the city attorney, and that's all I have to offer the council this evening.
Thank you, Counselor Denham. Property, Counselor there?
No report, thank you.
Okay. Rules and government relations, Counselor Kuzinski?
No report, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, I guess that's easy. So the new business we have is the mayoral annual reappointments. I'll pass that to Counselor Riley. We can do them all in one motion.
Oh, you want to do them all right there? As in, do you need me to read off everybody's...
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice President. So currently, we did not meet since our last meeting, but I do have new business items that are going to be coming up at the end of this meeting, so I would like to schedule our next meeting for December 2nd at 6:00 p.m. And that's going to be, that's a Monday, and that'll be in Conference Room 2, which is right here behind City Council Chambers, and thus concludes.
Thank you, Counsel Riley. Ordnance, Counsel Denham.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We haven't met since our last meeting. We're still waiting for the review from the city attorney regarding the East Hampton Shreveery ordinance, and we're still evaluating the amendments to Chapter 2, Division 3, Council on Aging. I do anticipate that we will have some additional items for our next agenda in addition to these, but we have not set that date yet, because we are waiting for that information from the city attorney, and that's all I have to offer the council this evening.
Thank you, Counsel Denham. Property, Counsel Zare.
No report, thank you.
Okay. Rules and Government Relations, Counsel Krasinski.
No report, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, I guess that's easy. So the new business we have is the mayoral annual reappointments. I'll pass that to Counsel Riley. We can do them all in one motion.
Oh, you want to do them all right there? As in, do you need me to read off everybody's names?
You do not.
Perfect.
Yes.
Okay. So at least just for everybody to understand, I have looked through the list. There were no any glaring issues with those who are being reappointed. The one thing that I do always want to point out every year that we do this is while most people have three-year reappointments, our city attorney must be reappointed every year on a one-year term. So if you happen to look at the list and you see, why is Mark Tanner being only appointed until the end of next year? That's why. His contract is very specific from the rest. So that being said, I will make a motion to reappoint all of the current mayoral reappointments. Oh, I thought you were saying we were literally approving them.
No, we're going to send them to committee first.
Too bad.
I mean, that would be nice, but.
Thank you. I was so confused for a second.
Sorry.
Yes, I make a motion to send all of the mayoral reappointments to the appointment committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or nays? Seeing none, motion passes. And on my agenda, I don't see any other new business, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
And I just press stop, right?